Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, well, welcome to everyone that is in our, in your City Hall. Happy to see you here. We have a room full. We're gonna start with the first item on our agenda, which, or the second item on our agenda, 2A, which is proclamations. And the first one is Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of person with disabilities, and whereas July 26, 2022 marked this 32nd anniversary of the signing of the ADA, which expanded access and opportunities for people with disabilities, and whereas the ADA has done this by reducing barriers and changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement this act. And whereas Iowa City affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth and embody in the ADA, and whereas the Iowa City government and residents are proud to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our residents with disabilities. And whereas throughout the year, and on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the City of Iowa City reaffirms principles of equity and inclusion for all community members, and recommits to our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now, therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, here do by proclaim July 26, 2022, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day, and call upon all community members to commemorate this day, celebrate the progress that has been made, and renew our commitment to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And to receive this proclamation is Ed Esbeck, Self Advocacy Coordinator with the Iowa's University Center for Excellence and Developmental Disabilities. So, welcome. You're welcome to say some words.
Yeah. This is a big opportunity, and a great honor to be here among everybody. Thank you so much to Iowa City for recognizing the Disabilities Act. And we, we still have a long way to go, to go, in encouraging people with disabilities to, to overcome their challenges just first, yeah, and to know that we have the power to change who we want to be. We have the power to change who, where we want to live, to live. And we, we are part of the community. We serve people with disabilities among those who are people who are able to see and to achieve their dream and their accomplishment. So, thank you so much for the, for this confirmation.
Thank you. We are on to our consent agenda, which is items three through eight. And with the referral of item 6H, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move. Second, Taylor.
Move by Weiner, second by Taylor. Is anyone in the public would like to discuss any item within the consent agenda? Before I actually open that up, I would just say the IVW Commercial Park plot, our final plot, is the 6H that we're deferring at the request of the developers.
To clarify, deferring until next meeting on August 16th.
Yes, yes. Anyone from the public would like to address any item that is here? All right, seeing no one, we're gonna move on to council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed, a seven to zero. We're on to item number nine, which is community comment. This is an opportunity for those in the community to come forth and share some things that is not on our agenda. And we will allow, the period will end at 7:00 PM, unless an extension is needed to meet a minimum of 30 minutes, but we have plenty of time today. We ask people to keep their comments to three minutes. And we will start with everyone giving us their name, and where, and the city they live in. And there also is a sign-in sheet at the podium, and there's also a sign-in sheet at the back of the room.
Should we go in order of who signed up?
We're gonna go in order of who's in the line right now, but thank you. Welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ninoasca Campos. Estoy con Escúchame Voz y apoyando las 319 personas que fueron excluidas de la ayuda de asistencia directa. Hi, good evening. My name is Ninoasca Campos. I'm here supporting the 319 people that were excluded from the, from the checks. I'm also with Escúchame Voz. Estamos en desacuerdo donde ustedes dicen que ustedes patrocinan la mitad de las personas excluidas y el condado de Johnson da dinero a la otra mitad. We are in disagreement of the solution you came up with, where you would pay for half and the county would pay for the other half. El condado de Johnson cumplió su palabra repartiendo los dos millones de dólares. The county made their word. They gave out all $2 million? Ellos gastaron los recursos que tenían. Ustedes prometieron dar 1.5 millones de dólares a las personas. They completed with giving out all the resources that they said with the $2 million. You all promised 1.5 million. ¿Y cómo es posible que ustedes digan que el condado tiene que pagar si el dinero lo tienen ustedes? Ustedes prometieron 1.5 millones de dólares, el cual no repartieron en su totalidad. It doesn't make sense for you to have the county give more when they gave out all their $2 million, and when you still have extra money, the 1.5 million to give out. Entonces, si quieren resolver este problema, páganle al condado de Johnson el dinero que ellos pagaron a los de las, a las personas de la ciudad de Iowa City. So, to make a solution, you could pay the county for some of the people, your people, Iowa City residents, that they paid for, so that they can cover the rest. Para que venga el condado de Johnson y le dé el dinero a los, a las personas de los otros lugares le daños. That way, the county is able to cover the other people that are outside of Iowa City. Porque ustedes prometieron 1.5 millones de dólares. Ustedes tenían que cumplir su palabra. You did promise 1.5 million dollars, and it's important to do what you say. ¿Cómo es posible que teniendo los recursos necesario, le digan al condado que tiene que dar la mitad del dinero, si ustedes son los que tienen el dinero? It seems silly for you to ask the county to give money when you do have the money in your hands to use. Entonces, para no estar con este juego, revuélvanle al condado de Johnson el dinero que repartió a las personas de la ciudad para que venga el condado de Johnson y pague a las demás personas. So, to stop playing this game, it would be easiest if you gave the county money to cover more of your residents, and then they would have enough to cover the others. Eso es todo, gracias. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily. Emily Senell from Iowa City. So, Iowa City was given a lot of money from ARPA. And just to put this in perspective, on a per capita basis, Iowa City was given $246 for every person. Johnson County, it's 190 per person. Coroville, 152 per person, and North Liberty, 90 per person. The 1.5 million the city initially allocated for the direct assistance could have helped Johnson County create a 3.5 million fund, enough to cover 2,500 residents. However, because of the particular way the sub-recipient agreement was written, that's not what happened. So, 2,238 county residents were deemed eligible, but only 1,919 were funded. This left 319 people behind. Of the 1428, 1,428 county residents funded by Johnson County, 823 were Iowa City residents. That's 57%. Again, Johnson County paid for 823 Iowa City residents. Iowa City only funded 472 city residents. That's less than a third of the total who applied. Johnson County paid for nearly two-thirds of Iowa City residents, and 75% of the total program. As a result, Johnson County exhausted its funds on Iowa City residents and did not have enough money to cover other residents. As it stands now, Iowa City only paid 25% of the total program cost, but got 67% of the benefit. We don't think this is a fair contribution by Iowa City. A supermajority of applicants came from here, and Iowa City received the vast amounts of ARPA dollars compared to non-entitlement units in the county. What I want to ask you today is what I see as the most simple, fastest, and easiest solution, and that's to reauthorize the reimbursement of an additional 319 Iowa City residents. You don't have to pay for people outside your city. Cover 319 Iowa City residents so that Johnson County has enough money to fully fund all the remaining eligible applicants. Like Ninoasca said, the county used all their $2 million, and you have lots of money left. In fact, if you do this, Johnson County will still pay more than 500 Iowa City residents, and Iowa City will still come nearly $250,000 under budget. But it will come closer to paying the fair share, given the circumstances, and everyone will win. You really are in the best position to step up and make this a fast, easy solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please give your name and city.
Supervisor Roy San Porter, Iowa City. I just come back from Denver, Colorado. I was out there for six days. When I got back, I had an anonymous letter in the mail, which stated, Supervisor Porter, I have attached episodes of the podcast Rock Hard Caucus to this USB. You should listen to them. Iowa City TRC Chair Amel Ali says very offensive things about you, and other community members, community leaders, calling you coons, describes getting intoxicated before meetings, insults your daughter's business, and describes inappropriate personal conduct on her own part, including driving while intoxicated and prostituting herself to sugar daddies. To the Iowa City Council from the Black Voices Leadership Team, regarding racism and slander perpetrated by TRC Chair Amel Ali, last week, it came to our attention that Amel Ali, who was appointed to the ad hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission by the Iowa City Council and selected by TRC members to serve as chair, has appeared on a local podcast, Rock Hard Caucus, or more than once, to slander local black leaders. She has called out a number of Black Voices Project members and other community leaders by name, using the most racist and offensive terms, calling out Supervisor Roy San Porter, body shaming, and calling out her and her daughter Stacy Porter, which do not bear repeating in this correspondence. This is far more than an extension of the disagreement between current TRC members and BVP, members who had previously resigned from the TRC. She has verbally attacked a whole swath of our local community leaders, a choice wholly inconsistent with the charge of the commission she is supposed to be leading. We call on all members of the council to listen to the June 9th and June 16th Rock Hard Caucus podcast episodes, and consider the message you are sending when your appointed representative is publicly degrading members of the very community with whom your TRC is supposed to be working to repair fractured relationship. Her choice to speak this way clearly demonstrates that she is not capable of leading us toward reconciliation. She should resign, and we urge you to go into executive section ASAP to remove her and make Chesity Diller your new chair so that the TRC can move forward. And I just want to say, if you don't remove her soon, I'm telling you now, we will remove her. So, it's best if you don't want to hear the slander. You all appointed her to the TRC, you appointed her as your chair, and she is not representation of our council. Thank you, of our community.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Orville Townsend, 713 Whiting Avenue. My topic is the same as Ms. Porter's. I was disappointed that this young lady chose to use my name. I don't know her. I don't know why she would, but I guess she felt, like she said, I'm just tired, an old tired person, which means there's age discrimination, and that I should just pull aside and get out of the way. I want to make two things perfectly clear. First, I respect an individual's right to freedom of speech. Therefore, I respect what she said. Why I have a problem is, is I understand that you have recently appointed her to one of your commissions. And I feel that any person that would go to this extent to treat fellow citizens verbally the way that she has, has no right to be in any position where she's representing citizens or anything that the city has to do with. So, therefore, I'm requesting that you remove her from any commissioner committee that you've appointed her to, and that you bar her from future participation on committees. This, I mean, I'm, I'm for public service. I've done everything I can, I could, to try to help Iowa City be a better place. But it really irks me when I see an individual who just out of, I don't know what it is, ignorance, I don't know, that would go to this extent to just tear other citizens down that she doesn't know personally. I mean, personal feelings are personal. You should keep them to yourself, or you should pay a consequence. And I think this young lady should witness consequences based upon her behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Maria Figueroa.
My name is Maria Figueroa.
Vivo en las trailas de Breckenridge.
I live in the mobile homes of Breckenridge.
Estoy aquí porque fui excluida de la ayuda de 1,400 que está dando la, el condado de Johnson.
I'm here because I was excluded from the checks, the $1,400 that the county was giving out.
Solo para pedirle que por favor seamos incluidas otra vez en esta ayuda de 1,400.
I would like to ask you, please, that you make us included again in this help of $1,400.
Por favor, si la ayuda la tiene la ciudad de Iowa City o el condado, porque yo estoy confundida, porque yo tenía entendido que yo vivía en la ciudad de Iowa City.
Please, if the money, if Iowa City has the money, or the county has the money, I'm confused. I thought I lived in Iowa City.
Pero ahora sé que el lote de trailas donde estoy es del condado de Johnson, pero yo sé que estoy en la ciudad de Iowa City.
But now I know that my trailer is in the county of Johnson City, but I am in Iowa City. Oh, sorry, is in Johnson County, but I am in Iowa City.
Es confundido para mí.
Confusing for me.
Pero mi dirección dice Iowa City.
My direct, my address says Iowa City.
Oh, pero tengo un hijo de...
Oh, sí.
Okay. Tengo un hijo, en realidad tengo tres hijos ciudadanos, tengo un hijo con autismo.
The truth is, I have three children who are citizens. I have one child who has autism.
Y por favor, solo les pido a la ciudad de Iowa City, si hacen un acuerdo con el condado de Johnson, y por favor, nos pueden incluir otra vez para esta ayuda de 1,400, que sería una gran ayuda para mí.
And I'm just asking, please, if you can make a way to work with the county to give out the $1,400 checks, this would be a huge help for me.
Sí, es para la ayuda para mi familia, para mi tráiler, para poder hacerle arreglos a mi tráiler, por favor.
It would be help for me, for my family, specifically to make improvements on my trailer.
Gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Bienvenido.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Flores.
Good afternoon. My name is María Flores.
Soy una de las personas excluidas.
I'm one of the people that were excluded.
Vengo aquí para exigir.
I'm here to ask, or, like, yeah, strongly ask.
El cheque porque yo dice que yo soy elegible.
For the check, because it said I was eligible.
Y cuando estuvo la pandemia, a mí no me excluyé, no me excluyó la pandemia de no tener trabajo.
I wasn't excluded from the pandemic.
No tener trabajo, tenías trabajo.
De no tener trabajo. I didn't have work.
A mí no me excluyó la pandemia de estar decidiendo a ver a quién tiene el dinero, quién no.
The pandemic didn't exclude me by saying, like, who had the money and who didn't.
A mí no me excluyó la pandemia de estar pensando, si te lo voy a dar, no te lo voy a dar, cuando fui afectada.
The pandemic didn't exclude me when it came to choices if they would give me the money or not.
Cuando tengo deudas a causa de la pandemia, a punto de perder mi casa.
Lots of debts, debts because of the pandemic, almost losing my house.
Pienso que este cheque es para, fue para todo mundo.
I feel like this money should, went, is supposed to be for everyone in the world.
Y creo que son muchas vueltas las que se están dando para que todavía estén pensando si, si nos lo dan o no.
We have to, we're having to do a lot, even just to see if they're gonna give it to us or not.
Cuando hay suficiente dinero para darnolo.
Sí, sí. Oh, especially when there's enough money to give out. Okay, gracias.
Great, thank you. We have some people also online, so I'm gonna switch to a few people here. We're gonna welcome Amel. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for giving me this chance to speak candidly. My words and comments contained in the release recording were wrong. They were ill-considered, and most of all, they were hurtful. And for all of that, I'm deeply sorry. Trauma begets trauma. In many ways, I made those hurt, harmful comments at a time when I was experiencing trauma, personally, while under the challenges of navigating my role in the context of this commission. The recording with my comments was released, in my view, or at least in part, to disrupt our important work to address the continuous harm BIPOC communities experience, particularly following the murder of George Floyd and many others thereafter. Telling the truth about harmful experiences, healing from harm, making repairs and reconciliation are the pillars of our work. Despite the call by the mayor and others to have me resign, I can't walk away and turn my back on the trust, hope, and responsibilities entrusted to all of us on this commission. Resignation to the way things are has been the default of too many communities for too long. Let's put our words over these last few years to the test and follow through on forgiveness, belonging, and truth. You may not always like what you hear, but like me, we will be bringing our community to the table to share their experience. It might not feel good to hear, but it's not to shame you or anyone. It's to tell the truth about my experience that isn't privileged or valued. We took our lead from those in South Africa, where women spoke about their trauma, and the entire world stopped to listen. Here in the United States, it made a deniable impact on all of us. Reverend Nelson Johnson, the co-founder of the Greensboro Truth Commission, sat down face-to-face with the Grand Wizard of the KKK because he believed they had to face hard truths. Can we not do this here? I submit, the only way forward is a restorative justice process, one which I'm trying, currently trying to use to address harm someone else caused me. I've learned a great deal about myself through this harm I caused, and will continue to learn and heal with this community and the mental health professionals that are supporting me. I truly believe in the notion that forgiveness does not change the past, but it does enlarge the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to the next caller online. Anna, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Anna Gudinkoff, and I live in Iowa City. It is my understanding that over the past week, TRC Chair Amel Ali has been under attack by a handful of community members asking for her removal. I want to state my complete confidence in her work. Ali has regularly been a target of racist and homophobic harassment from Iowa City community members in her time on the commission, and despite this, has continued to be a unifying leader. It has helped move the TRC forward despite constant challenging by community members and council members uninterested in a racial justice reckoning. I am grateful for Ali's tireless work both on the TRC and in her community care in Iowa City. I ask that council consider a restorative justice process for recent events, and that she remain the head of the TRC and continue the amazing work the commission has been working on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna do one more from online, then we're gonna come back in person. Welcome, Felicia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name's Felicia Peeper, and I live in Iowa City. I'd also like to speak in support of Commissioner Amel Ali. And I would like to say that, on top of the other comments that have been made in support of Commissioner Ali, that there's been a disturbing trend since the protests in 2020 of disparaging and just even ignoring black progressive female leaders. As another commenter already spoke about, Amel specifically has faced a lot of harassment and disparaging comments, both as a black person and as a queer person. And I wish I could say that this was unique, but it's a pattern that's been continuing to go on. I also want to just go back to the beginning of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission and point out that when IFR demanded for this commission to be put in place, that the city fundamentally removed any of the people power that the commission should have had. And I still support Reniem Hanamad and her resignation as that unfolded. I would say that what is happening right now is predictable, and it's unfortunate. I support Amel Ali fully. She continues to do good work, not only in her job and her everyday life, but in her free time, regularly through mutual aid, and this is clearly something that she's very passionate and good at. I think, I find it very disturbing that both black and white people continue to go out of their way to target Amel Ali, and this needs to stop. I fully support Amel staying on the TRC as commissioner, and look forward to seeing the work that she continues to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a total of 13 people that, we have Natalie still online that I will acknowledge in a little bit. And we have 13 people. I'm not sure if we have 14. But in order to get everyone in, I'm gonna drop the minutes down to two minutes. Thank you, welcome. Welcome.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Brizny García Rivera.
Good evening. My name is Brizny García Rivera.
Yo vivo en Iowa City, en las trailas del Scott Boulevard.
I live in Iowa City. The trailer is on, off of Scott Boulevard.
Soy una de las personas que quedó excluida de este beneficio, del cheque de estímulo.
I was one of the people that were excluded from this check, this benefit check.
De lo que yo tengo entendido, en mi dirección sale que yo soy una persona que vive en Iowa City.
What I understood was I was a person, according to my address, that I live in Iowa City.
No entiendo por qué, este, nos han excluido las personas que no somos del centro de Iowa City, porque hemos sido excluidas, si nosotros vivimos en Iowa City.
I don't understand why we're being excluded, just because we don't live in the center part of Iowa City.
Para mí esto es como una discriminación, porque yo trabajo aquí, trabajo en restaurantes que son de Iowa City, que ayudan a la economía de aquí, de esta ciudad.
For me, this is, feels like a discrimination. I work here in Iowa City, the restaurants, I contribute to the economy here.
Así como las 319 personas que hemos quedado excluidas.
Just like the 319 people that have been excluded.
Entonces, yo sé que ustedes tienen ese dinero para poder ayudar a las 319 personas que hemos quedado excluidas.
I do know that you all have the money to be able to help the 319 people that were excluded.
Por favor, les pedimos que haga una solución, porque la verdad, es cansado estar aquí siempre, pero yo sé que vale la pena. porque la verdad, es cansado estar aquí siempre, pero yo sé que vale la pena.
Please, we ask you to come up with a solution. It's getting really tiring to come up here over and over. I know it's worth it, but...
Ha sido un año de tanta lucha para que esta ayuda se diera.
It's been a long year, a lot of fighting so that we could get some help, some of this help.
Y gracias a Dios que se le pudo dar a algunas personas, pero decepcionada porque no fueron a todas.
And thanks to God, a lot of people are able to get help, others were deceived.
Yo soy madre de familia, tengo dos hijos, estoy aquí luchando por mi marido y por las 319 personas que hemos quedado excluidas. Y por favor, les pido que ustedes tienen esos fondos para poder ayudarnos, que por favor, no estén diciendo que nosotros damos esto y el otro condado de esto. Si ustedes saben que ustedes son los que tienen ese dinero para poder ayudarnos, la verdad, somos 319 personas que estamos a la deriva.
I'm a mama too, with my husband. Please, you know, please don't go asking the county to give this money. If you have the ability, have the money in hands to help these people that were excluded.
Buenas tardes, Dios los bendiga.
Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jenna McCoy from Iowa City and I'm here as a friend of Escuche Mi Voice as well, because I'd like to see the ARPA funds get fairly distributed here. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the work you've already put into this and we know it's been a long year and we're coming to the end. And we think there's a really simple solution. So Johnson County funded over 800 people that are Iowa City residents. None of this, oh, they live on the other side. They actually live in Iowa City. There are now 319 people that live on the other side of that city line that are technically Johnson County residents and not part of Iowa City. So what we think would be the best solution is for Iowa City to simply pay Johnson County for those 319 people. It was a little upsetting to hear about asking Johnson County to pay 50% of it because the money for Iowa City is there and Johnson County already paid so many Iowa City residents. Iowa City would still come out ahead of not having to pay around 500 people, if we do 800 minus 300, that Iowa City doesn't have to pay. So if Iowa City gives the money to Johnson County, they still come out in a positive number and then those 319 people are able to be funded by Johnson County. And then the whole thing's over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my husband and I planned for, we wrote our remarks out to fall within three minutes each and it's not going to make any sense if we stop at two. So we'll yield our time, but can you tell us how we can get on the agenda for the next meeting?
You have up to two minutes right now.
It's not going to make sense.
Okay. We meet again on the 16th.
I know, but how can we get on to the agenda?
We meet again on the 16th.
But this is, you know, the comment section is different from the agenda section.
Right, you won't be able to get on the agenda, but you have the opportunity now to speak.
Comment. Well, as I said, it's not going to make any sense.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So what you're saying is that we could come back to be on the comment section, but the agenda is set by the council?
Either you can comment now or you can come back. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Justin Fishbaugh, Iowa City. I'm here this evening to point out some of the cost analysis highlights of the 228-page Parks and Recreation Department's Condition of Pools Report, which is this thing if you haven't seen it. The report, Condition of Pools Report, that supports the idea of fixing the Robert A. Lee pool. If you haven't had a chance to view this report, it became available at the July 13 Parks and Recreation Meeting and is available online. In that report, WT Engineering Group looked at the condition of the three Iowa City pools. Williams Architects looked at the buildings that housed the pools and Barry Dunn Consultants presented results of a public survey and made recommendations for a future direction. Okay, here's the important part. What WT Engineering and Williams Architects show is that Robert A. Lee Pool and Naterium could be repaired for a total of $579,000. This is nowhere near the $4.5 to $5 million figure reported to the public to repair the pool. The difference is because expenses for Robert A. Lee Pool repairs are being lumped into the costs for the entire RAL building and then reported as the cost to fix the pool. I'm going to go ahead and move on here. So in conclusion, the WT Engineering Report says that the RAL pool is in fair condition for its age. It doesn't leak water. And if repairs are made, Iowa City would operate the pool for many years for a cost of less than $600,000. That's eight times less than what's being reported. The Friends of RAL Pool, some of which are in the back there, and more than 280 people have signed on in support and I recommend making this investment so that we can have a top-notch swimming facility as an important part of our vibrant downtown. And I prepared a packet of specific pages from the report to help you understand the costs, if I can leave that with you. Thank you.
You can.
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to go online to Natalie, welcome.
Hi, my name is Natalie and I am calling to express my unmitigated support for Amel. What happened is a targeted attack against an incredible back activist in Iowa. It's outrageous. Amel has worked so hard, she's a powerhouse and every single day I'm dazzled by her. She's the hardest working, most spectacular activist I've ever met. I'm honored to be her friend and to work with her. I support her 100%. This is a targeted campaign latching onto anything to disparage a black femme activist. The podcast was with Friends behind a paywall and it was stolen and released in a racist attack. Amel is my hero, she's a tireless fighter. This is outrageous, racist and a distraction and I stand behind her 100%.
Thank you Natalie.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Anne Houlihan and I'm a citizen, a resident of Coralville and a volunteer at the Iowa City Catholic Worker Houses. I was disappointed to hear Iowa City Council say that Johnson County should step up to help fund the 319 excluded workers. Most of the $2 million spent by Johnson County went to Iowa City residents. Whereas Iowa City paid for 472 residents, Johnson County paid for 827 Iowa City residents. So about half of Iowa City's contribution has been or will be refunded to the city. These are federal dollars intended for pandemic relief. If Iowa City refunded the allotment for 319 of the Iowa City residents paid for by Johnson County, all the supplicants can receive the $1,400 payments. Thank you for your consideration. And I would like to say that the pickleball courts at Mercer are better since they're being patched, but I look forward to when they will be redone, so, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sharon DeGra and I've been working in the North Side area on a petition with my friend Amy Kretkowski. And we've asked to have a meeting with the council members to take in what our understanding is after we've spoken to many of the neighbors in the North Side and the Manville Heights area and will span out, how the City Park Pool is used. We're getting an overall consensus that many people didn't know there was going to be a major change made or is proposed. And many people do appreciate the idea that the pool would retain its original footprint and could have a zero entry along one side of the 18-inch depth, the shallow end. And that for the little kid pool, perhaps that could be expanded with some of the amenities that are like sprayers and I don't know what else, but it's a very beautiful tranquil pool and there are many people that are surprised that it could change radically. So we hope that you can listen to us talk to you for about 20 minutes and tell you a series of bullet points that we hope you'll appreciate and digest. That's it.
Thank you. Welcome. And there are stickers in the back for people to write their name on and they can place the sticker up there so that people are aware. But welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Put this up here. I'm also here to express, I'm a friend of the Robert A. Lee Pool and I'm also here to express my support for rejecting the recommendation to redesign.
What's your name and city?
Amy Kretkowski, Iowa City.
Thank you.
Sorry. The City Park Pool is, for me, what makes summer here in Iowa City really, really incredibly special. And I'm not alone. In the past two weeks, we've collected over 220 signatures from swimmers of all ages who oppose the new design because it's going to reduce the current lap lanes down to three, from nine to three, and it doesn't retain the current pool's aesthetic or the original character. I honestly don't know how the current and future users of Iowa City's current pools are going to be accommodated by three outdoor lap lanes in the summer and just the Mercer Pool for the rest of the year. It doesn't make any sense and it's really not what the community wants. The city should keep the current traditional footprint of the City Park Pool, fix it, repair it, replace it by all means, add a zero entry, add new spray features, but please don't take away the existing features of this pool that are used and loved the most. One final note, the Parks and Rec Commission voted to recommend this to City Council at their May 23 meeting. The public comment period didn't close until June 4. For this reason alone, the City Council should reject the recommendation because it was made without the benefit of full public input. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can just fill out a thingy down there and just drop it off?
Yes. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Heine, I live here in Iowa City and I am on the Pickleball Johnson County Advisory Board. I'm here to talk about how we in Iowa City need new and additional pickleball courts at Mercer Park and in Iowa City. We have 483 members of Pickleball Johnson County and Pickleball Johnson County uses a program called Playtime Schedular where we can sign up for a game and people can join in with that game. During the month of July, we had 977 players sign up through Playtime Schedular to play just at Mercer, which averages out 31.5 players per day. This does not count the number of players that do not belong to Pickleball Johnson County and that do not use Playtime Schedular. There are many families that come out at night and on weekends with their children. There are numerous young people, college students that play. We have seen groups from churches, residents, medical groups, friends, coworkers, et cetera, that will play together that do not belong to Pickleball Johnson County and we've tried to tell them about Playtime Schedular and they just want to come for fun. So those numbers, the 922 for July, do not count people that have not signed up for that. The wind barriers at Mercer have been torn and mostly taken down as there's no way to repair them, to put them back up. So we found a sponsor that paid for new wind barriers at a cost of $4,500 and those wind barriers are ordered and should be coming soon. And that $4,500 did not come out of any city budget. So two weeks ago or so, a bench showed up at Mercer Pickleball Courts and we absolutely love it and we want to thank whoever brought it. But we would like to ask for more benches. There's three benches sitting at the little building in between the two parking lots at Mercer that no one uses. If we could get those moved over to the park, we need a place where we can sit down and put our court shoes on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Myra Clark and I live in Coralville. I am a member of the Pickleball Johnson County. I'm also a pickleball ambassador and give free pickleball lessons. There's two more ambassadors. One is Dwayne Miller in North Liberty and Jim Broffitt in Iowa City. We all give pickleball lessons, they're all free. It's a volunteer job. As Mary Ellen said, we're growing and it's going to continue growing. We have lessons Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Saturday at Green State Family Field House, Mercer Park Outdoor Pickleball Courts. We're giving lessons at City Park in Iowa City and lessons have been given at the Iowa City Rec Center, Robert A. Lee. So I've been averaging four new pickleball players a day, that's 16 per week. So the numbers are growing and we're going to need more pickleball courts in the future. It is to everyone's benefit if the city pickleball courts are well-maintained and have the amenities such as a shaded rest area, water fountains and of course benches. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jim Broffitt, resident of Iowa City and I also want to talk about pickleball and mainly just the courts I play at in Alabama. There are two cities right next to each other, just like Iowa City and Coralville, very similar in size. One is Auburn, or the home of Auburn University, and the other is Opalika, which is smaller, kind of like Coralville. The total population of those two towns in 2019 was about 10,000 less than Coralville and Iowa City. In 2019, they finished some state-of-the-art courts. You can't see the pictures from here, I can leave some of these. But there are 12 courts. There are three rows of four courts and in between the rows, they have aisles with benches. And those are places for people to sit between games or congregate to talk. We really need something like that at Mercer Park. Sometimes we have 50 people there at one time and there's no place for us to congregate. In fact, you can't play on some of the courts because people are standing basically on top of the courts. So aisles are a great feature that we don't have now. The other thing is they have a canopy over these 12 courts. And the last time I was there, which was last September, I played with my grandson in a pouring rain. We didn't get wet. So that's another great feature and I would suggest that you consider these kinds of courts for Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Jerome Kirby, he/him/his Iowa City resident. Nice to put a face next to some of the names I've seen on signs throughout the community. I am one of the younger people for pickleball, you probably couldn't tell that, but I like to go out and play with them. Sometimes I win, sometimes I lose. I will say that the courts out at Mercer Park have been a gem and the nice thing for us to still establish community as we rebound from COVID-19. I think it would be nice to just shine that gem up for us. There's eight courts out there, a lot of them cracked. I know that y'all are going out there and patching, but the patching y'all are doing is a little slick too, so it's not really a safest thing for people that are a little bit more in age and a little bit mobile, limited. I do run for the ball sometimes too, to help out and sometimes I slip as well. I also think that the shading out there is somewhat good, but we end up with a lot of leaves and branches out on some of the courts. So eight courts really drops down to six pretty easily and then sometimes down to four. I would appreciate if y'all could just increase the number of courts. If that's too big of an ask, then try to take care of our courts a little bit more. I've traveled out to North Liberty. It's great out there, but they don't have the gates in between, which Mercer does. So always going to play at my home court in Mercer because I live on the east side. Also, if I could do one shout out, these are not good. They don't stick at all. So please get y'all some new little labels as well, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mohamed Tarirohi, reside in Tiffin, Iowa. And speaking at this time as just myself and not as a member of a commission, I'd like to speak in support of the Excluded Workers Fund and like to point to some of the strategic priorities of Iowa City while I address this. So it says that you're looking to foster a more inclusive, just and sustainable Iowa City by prioritizing the physical, mental and economic well-being of all residents. And that a key piece of that is to advance social justice, racial equity and human rights.
Continue.
So in the human rights aspect, I'd just like to bring up that imagine having to come up here and look at all of you, knowing that there was an opportunity at the time an agreement was made to make it ironclad so that I could receive, not myself, but so I could receive a $1,400 check that I've been begging you for, for a year, so that I could pay to put food on the table for my kids or pay the bills. And you do know that my mobile home is going to have the rent increased by $200 or more in the coming months and that it's still a decision of, yes, we have to figure out how it's done. Would I feel like my human rights are being respected or advanced? But also, in addition to that, promoting an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city. Also knowing that throughout the pandemic, that I worked in the city and made sure that your essential services were running and that at this time, I also got sick with this very disease that you got to stay home and avoid. And that for many of those same people, that they have lingering health issues. And on top of that, that they missed more work because of that and in some cases were not reimbursed. And yet again, standing here in front of you, begging you to make me whole or to try, all the while knowing that it's a question of effort rather than having the resources when it comes to whether you can actually accomplish this goal of making sure that the remaining 319 are made whole. So when it comes to a strategic plan, can you give a strategic reason as to why you would not support the remaining 319 and do everything you can to make sure they're whole? And with that, I yield the floor. And with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you. So I'm going to take one other person that is online. Welcome, Shay.
Hello, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
My name is Shay. I'm a resident here in Iowa City. I'd like the council to consider allowing Amel Ali to hold her current position despite the negative comments being made about her. Amel is loved by this community. She has went above and beyond to support the people of color here in Iowa City. When it appears that we have no other support, she's the most outgoing and respected person I know. I truly do look up to her, and I pray that Amel's positive intentions go unnoticed during these times. She has had such a positive impact, positive and big impact here on the youth here in Iowa City, in the Iowa City schools. As someone that aspires to become as active in my community as Amel is, I would love to continue seeing women of color and black women specifically hold these positions in council. In this climate that we currently live in, our youth needs representation, so thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone that was a part of the comment time. We're going to move on to Items 10, Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 10A is rezoning Monument Hills. Ordinance conditionally rezoned an approximately 64.37 acres of property located north of Rochester Avenue and west of North Scott Boulevard from interim development, single-family residential to low-density, single-family residential with a planned development overlay, and 0.31 acres to interim development, single-family with a planned development overlay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to start with Staff Danielle Stutzman. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Danielle Stutzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As the mayor stated, this is a rezoning application for two different zoning districts requested as part of the rezoning in an area we commonly call Monument Hills. Shown here, outlined in a white box and labeled as Parcel A and B. The majority of the rezoning would be for Parcel A, which would be designated as a planned district overlay and a low-density, single-family district, and then a remnant Parcel B retaining its interim development residential status but adding the overlay district zone to it. That is an area where there's an existing development of a cell tower, which was approved through a special exception in 2009. For orientation purposes, along the bottom edge here is Rochester. Along the right-hand side or the eastern side is North Scott Boulevard. To the north is Harvest Preserve, and to the west is existing, single-family development on Large Lane. Also, just to the southeast, along the intersection of Scott Boulevard and Rochester Avenue is neighborhood commercial development, Old Town Village. Both Scott Boulevard and Rochester Avenue are designated as arterial streets in the city's street network. The applicant in this case is Representative Mike Welch. He may be joining us online, or he may not be able to speak depending on his technical savvy tonight. The application is on behalf of Monument Farms LLC, who are the owners of the land along in this parcel and some surrounding area. It is not the Harvest Preserve ownership. Like I said, that is located farther to the north. This exhibit shows the existing zoning in the area, largely a single-family residential, and as I mentioned, the neighborhood commercial shown in red. And again, this is exhibit showing the two proposed requested rezonings tonight, and as I mentioned, the smaller Parcel B is an existing cellphone tower. Because this is a planned development request for rezoning, it does include some additional details you would not normally see at a rezoning. It includes a sensitive areas development plan, which is similar to a site plan. That's because of the sensitive areas, wetlands and slopes that are included in this land, and the request for waivers from some of the baseline development standards to accommodate preservation of those sensitive features. So this is the overlay plan and sensitive areas development plan, preliminary one. It does show the network of streets that would be developed by the developer here, essentially a loop network connecting to Rochester of public streets, and then a segment of private street along the southeast corner there where there are more colorful blocks outlined indicating future housing development of senior community. So the color coding there is the white lots to the left are all single-family. To the right in the senior community, the kind of lighter blue color is single-family. The reds are duplexes, and the purple is a multifamily building that's proposed, as well as a clubhouse for it as well. There are outlots included in this development labeled as Outlet A, B, and C, so there are large areas that will not be developed as part of this because they are the areas that contain those sensitive features, and the development is clustering itself elsewhere to avoid impacting those as much as possible. One of those large outlots is Outlet A, which actually falls to the west of this development between itself and the existing, single-family to the west, farther west. One of the conditions of the rezoning, as I mentioned, is related to the cellphone tower, preserving the private access arrangement that that cellphone tower has. I'm going to go over that again when we get to the end of the presentation and talk about the conditions the staff recommended. Because this is an OPD or a planned development overlay rezoning, there are additional rezoning criteria that are reviewed in addition to the general rezoning criteria that we look at for all rezonings. The general rezonings criteria have to do with a comprehensive plan and compatibility with the existing neighborhood, and then four additional criteria that we'll go through here. So starting with those general criteria, having to do with essentially compliance with the comprehensive plan. In this part of town, there is a district plan, and I'll go over that in a second, but the basics of the comprehensive plan itself encourage conservation design because they acknowledge the large areas of this part of town do have sensitive features, so encouraging clustering of development out of the sensitive features as much as possible, and then also interconnecting trails and networks, trails and sidewalks as networks for getting around. This is essentially a cluster development in compliance with the comprehensive plan. 65 acres or roughly half of the total area will remain undeveloped when this is realized as this is proposed. As I mentioned, there's also a district plan, and there's the northeast district plan. The applicant did provide an overlay showing how their proposed development overlays when compared to the northeast district plan. Essentially, the northeast district plan encouraged and identified this area as the Bluffwood neighborhood, encouraged concentrating development along the arterials and included a variety of housing types kind of to buffer between that and the single-family neighborhoods around it. Obviously, the Harvest Preserve is not realizing the style of development as it's intended to simply preserve the land for use as a private open space. So things change over time, and to adjust to that, the street network cannot obviously connect in the same ways that were originally envisioned when the district planning process occurred. However, staff does feel that this is an adequate street network, working with the conditions that are there now and ensuring that there will be connected street network system. So it generally aligns with the concept and policy vision of the northeast plan. Just a little bit more specific about some of the ideals and goals expressed in the northeast district plan, especially relating to trails. This shows a highlight of the trail network connection being extended in the purple line there on the north, sorry, upper-left corner of the slide, showing a future trail connection to Calder Park. So to support that policy direction, staff has requested a condition for a 10-foot-wide trail connection and construction of that trail as part of future development. Talking about compatibility with the existing neighborhood now, again, this shows the outline in red of the proposed rezoning and how it relates to those other existing developments in the area. The proposed development is generally consistent with existing neighborhood character focusing on housing and single-family housing, but also including a mix of other development as expressed in the senior community included as part of this proposal. So to move on to talk about the specific criteria now as relate to the OPD or the sensitive areas development plan rezoning, we'll go through those just briefly here. These are the additional criteria that were reviewed by the Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission. As it relates to land use, the density of this development would be only about two dwelling units per acre, just under two dwelling units per acre, which is well below the limit of five dwelling units per acre allowed by the base zoning that's being requested. So it does meet the density requirements overall, even with the clustering of development. And of course, the use as housing and providing a variety of housing is in align with the intended goals of the comprehensive plan. Talking about the design now a little bit, looking at things like mass scale and general layout, predominantly, this is a house-scale development, single-family homes, both single-family and duplexes. Like I mentioned, there will be a multifamily building proposed at the intersection of the two arterial streets. It would still only be two stories in height and approximately 29 units. So focusing that multifamily development and buffering it from the additional, single-family development around it. They have requested a waiver from the base zoning requirements of RS5 to allow for some of the lot sizes in that senior community to be somewhat smaller than the base zoning, which is 60 feet, reducing that down to 56 feet of lot width instead. They've also requested a waiver from the requirements for duplexes to only be allowed on corner lots. In this case, they're including three duplexes, only one of which would be on a corner lot. The other two would be interior lots. And those are shown here in red. So again, this is the senior living component of the rezoning, showing the blue lots, which we have slightly smaller lot widths than the red lots, which would be the duplex lots. And again, the purple being the multifamily. They have included some renderings, which are included in your packet, showing the single-family housing, the duplex-style housing, and the multifamily housing. Those concepts would be tied to the rezoning as well so that future development occurs in a way that is compatible with having slightly more density and ensuring that things like garages don't dominate the view. Moving on to open space, the development would be required to comply with both public and private open space requirements. In this case, that has to do with a certain amount of private open space based on number of dwelling units in the multifamily, as well as a square-footage requirement for each single-family lot. They are in compliance with those requirements. They also would be required to provide public open space, either through dedication of land, or they have the ability to choose a Fianlu option instead. They've indicated they prefer to do the Fianlu and are instead also constructing a trail segment in an easement to ensure the connections that matter for this neighborhood. Again, we did look at light views and air and property surrounded by this. Whenever we look at a planned development, we always compare it to the potential impacts of a conventional development. This development is definitely clustering and providing a significant amount of land in outlots where development would not be occurring and is providing more than probably a conventional development would as far as open light and views throughout the development. Finally, touching on streets and utilities, we did analyze whether there was sufficient capacity for this development. There certainly is. We also had the developer provide a traffic study to analyze the impacts of additional development on the street network. It would be, the street network is sufficient to handle all of the proposed development. There would be a water pressure study that would be a follow-up and would occur at planning just to ensure that if there are any improvements needed for water pressure in this neighborhood, that they are addressed at that stage. One final, another condition that was required in the final waiver is that there would be some dedication of right-of-way needed along the intersection of North Scott and Rochester to facilitate perhaps city improvements in the future for a roundabout. Because of that dedication of land, there is a need for a waiver from the baseline setbacks in this area to accommodate the right-of-way that the city needs. That right-of-way does not impact the air, light, and views of the property or put neighbors too close together because of it, so it meets city code requirements as well. So that area in the pink on the screen is the right-of-way dedication that would impact slightly the setback of the multifamily building. As I mentioned, there are sensitive areas in this development, significant ones. The sensitive areas ordinance is intended to allow development but to still preserve those sensitive areas. So because of the impacts to wetlands and slopes on the site, they did have to prepare a study showing where those sensitive features are located and quantifying their impacts. Those impacts were presented in the sensitive areas development plan. In this case, the wetlands that are being impacted are largely because of the need for road development. They've tried to minimize those. There are some slight impacts to wetlands because of sidewalks as well. There is also an existing, rather large on the northwest corner of the slide, an existing conservation easement already in place. We did, this development does qualify for several kind of flexibilities that are built-in for wetlands, both having to do with where the buffers for the wetlands are determined to need to be. They can be averaged in width. They can also be reduced and have a mitigation bank payment made. In this case, a wetland specialist did study these wetlands and made proposals so that the most important parts of the wetland could be adequately preserved, and then any mitigation would be sufficient to offset those impacts for the road network and the streetworks, oh, sorry, sidewalks. Mentioning sensitive slopes, our ordinance basically classifies slopes as steep, steeper, and steepest. Only the steepest of slopes are those that have to be completely protected and not impacted. The steep and steeper slopes, or basically steep and critical, can be impacted as long as they are quantified and then minimized as much as possible. So this exhibit does show they're only impacting those two lower designations for slopes and that they are quantifying those here in the exhibit. So as far as process goes, we're at the rezoning step for the two different rezonings that I mentioned. There would be additional steps to follow for prelim and a final planning, and then final sensitive areas development plans, which would ensure that what's being represented here is fulfilled as development occurs. There would be site plans and building permits as well. So based on review of the relevant, general, and specific criteria, staff did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning with several conditions. Those included the dedication of a private access easement for that cell tower, as I mentioned, the dedication of a public access easement along a public trail, as I described there, and the construction of a 10-foot-wide trail in that easement, dedication of right-of-way to the city to allow for potential improvements at Rochester and North Scott. And then finally, some traffic calming that was expressed here, including raised sidewalks and roundabouts within the development, that those should be, continued to be described and approved as part of those additional land development steps of planning. At its July 6 meeting, by a vote of 6 to 0, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval. The applicant did conduct a Good Neighbor Meeting in May, and the conditional zoning agreement has been signed tonight. If you can see Mike online, he was going to try to be available for questions, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions on behalf of staff.
Okay, well, thank you. If anyone has questions for Danielle and Mike, I do see you are present, so if anyone has questions for Mike, they can speak as well. I do have a question. For the dedicated access easement, which is still up, which is great, I guess my question is, what is the ongoing cost that the city sees with these dedications?
Asking about the public easement for the trail?
Yes.
Okay, so the trail, its original construction would be the responsibility of the developer, and then trail maintenance would fall to the city after its original construction.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you. And then we're going to go to public comment, unless the developer had anything to add that staff did not mention. Welcome.
Good evening. Our development team here tonight consists of Mike Welch, who is online and available for questions and answers, Heather Ropp with Ewing Group and Vintage Cooperative, and myself, Joe Clark with Monument Hills. As a fellow East sider and local land developer and broker, I will actively be involved in planning, development, and sales of these lots over the next several years, as I did with my previous developments in Windmill Heights and Tamarack Ridge. I have five key points I'm going to present tonight pretty quickly. On rezoning, the comprehensive plan, northeast district plan, and Bluffwood neighborhood plans are land use scenarios intended to be general guides that may occur in this neighborhood. The principles set forth in these plans were used closely by our development team in creating the concept being brought before you tonight. Many different concepts were created and reworked prior to the submittal of this current concept. In fact, the Good Neighbor Meeting, held in June, allowed our team to see that six lots on the west side of the existing plan would need to be removed in efforts to satisfy the neighbors at Rochester Hills. the neighbors at Rochester Hills. We now have reached what we believe is the best plan for this particular parcel. Number two is environmental features in sensitive areas. The beautiful older more mature trees in Outlet B are being preserved, and additional street trees are being added to the new development with the landscaping plan. The project has also met the 50% woodland retention threshold imposed by the city. This has allowed us to preserve almost 33 acres of land in the conservation easement. Sensitive slopes, woodlands, and stream corridors were taken into consideration when choosing where to place roads and housing. These items limited the options our team had when designing the current plan. Number three, city staff is in full support of our plan and rezoning. It has been over a year since the first conversation we had about this development. The city staff has been very cooperative and helpful throughout the process. We have reached an agreeable condition zoning agreement that has been signed by all parties. These land projects take a lot of time and a lot of money to get started, and we are thankful to have produced such a wonderful project that is agreeable with all the city staff. Number four is P&amp;Z staff are unanimously in support of this development. On July 6, the P&amp;Z staff voted 6-0 in favor of the rezoning request. Almost all favorable comments were given at this meeting, including the three neighbors that showed up for the meeting. The P&amp;Z members believe there is a great diversity of housing types within the plan and the appropriate amount of preservation. Chair member Mike Hench is quoted as saying, "I don't recall seeing a proposal match the comprehensive plan and neighborhood vision so well. I commend the developers for doing this design and preserving the sensitive areas and the wetlands." Number five is supply and demand. As a local real estate broker, I see this new development as a positive way to increase housing stock at a time that it is needed most. The housing market has reached a crossroads with its supply and demand. The higher the supply, the lower the prices could be in the market. Each development that is voted through by this council is increasing supply and only making housing more affordable across Iowa City and the surrounding areas. I would like to end by restating some of the highlights of this development. This includes minimal impact to the surrounding wetlands and mitigation off-site, a 10-foot-wide bike-walking trail for public access connecting this new development to Calder Park, a new 5-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side of Rochester, over 50% woodland retention, including preservation of 32-plus acres in conservation easements. Protecting the older, more mature trees in Outlet B supplies a much-needed independent living facility for the 55-plus aging population in the area, creates a much-needed variety of housing options, including small single-family lots, large single-family lots, 12 patio homes, six twin homes, and 29 multifamily homes. Has a minimal impact on the view shed of the neighboring properties due to the conservation design, and adds land at no cost to the city's right-of-way at the intersection of Rochester and Scott for future city improvements, including possible roundabouts. And lastly, includes traffic calming features for the safe street networking. In conclusion, our preliminary drawings and rezoning requests are in line with the requirements imposed upon our development team, and I'm asking you tonight to vote yes in favor of this great project. I think Heather Ropp, if you guys want to hear anything additionally with the Ewing Properties, can briefly speak about that if you'd like to hear from her. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Heather Ropp. I am here on behalf of the developer, Ewing Properties, specifically addressing the proposed senior living component, what we are calling the Borough of Iowa City. We currently have two communities in Johnson County complete, one in Corleville, 59-unit building, sold out with a 30-plus-person waitlist. We have a community off Foster Road in Iowa City, a 53-unit building, sold out with a 40-plus-person waitlist, and soon to be a sold-out community in North Liberty. So what we have seen is a really high demand for what we're producing. We are building not only beautiful homes and communities for people to live, but we are really building this to build community amongst our buildings. This is an ownership model for people 55 and above. It is maintenance-free, completely inside and outside of their home, and it's really designed for people to age, interact with one another, really promotes healthy aging. We want people to use the common areas. We want them to build friendships. We really want them to enjoy the best years that they have ahead of them, being able to enjoy leisure retirement living, and so we're able to offer that. We are proposing a two-story building. We are proposing 12 individual patio homes and three sets of duplexes, six homes, for a total of 47 homes on this property. What's unique about what we put together is when people buy with us, they're buying a share. They're a shareholder, and they own an entire piece of the entire community. So here in Iowa City, they would own a share of the eight to nine acres this sits on and a share of the clubhouse and the common spaces that they will all use together as a community. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? And we will give up to three minutes. Welcome. Please give your name and the city you're in.
My name is David Sickles. Iowa City. I won't take three minutes. Just want to speak in favor of this zoning. I am a resident of Ewing Properties. They are a very good corporation, and they do their job. They do it very well. Would like to see this property and this zoning go through. It looks like a very good property development for Iowa City. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please sign in right there?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
And anyone else like to address this topic from the public?
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Ruth Bradley. I'm here with my husband, Bruce Tarwater. We would like to speak in favor of this project. We are of a certain age, where we are beginning to look at moving out of our single-family home and have been looking for something like this in the area. Not particularly interested in a condo building, but we didn't want to live in North Liberty. There's a reason I moved to Iowa City 12 years ago, and I don't want to leave it. So to have this community of the boroughs being built here in Iowa City is so exciting to us. It offers the opportunity for socialization with the community center. As we saw in the pandemic, our older citizens became more and more isolated. An opportunity like this, where we'd have a close neighborhood, an opportunity for socialization, we just think is wonderful, being able to age in place. We just think this would be a tremendous asset to Iowa City, and we are fully in favor of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic from the public? Seeing no one. I just wanted, before I close the public hearing, if council is inclined to support in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
Council discussion.
I'm very excited about this project. As the public members have said, it just seems like it'll be a really wonderful asset to the city of Iowa City. And as Mr. Clark mentioned, I think this is, we hear about the Good Neighbor Meetings all the time, and I think that this one is really a prime example of the importance and value of Good Neighbor Meetings. It's so obvious, and I would commend the developers for listening to the community members that came and expressed their concerns about the sensitive areas and about the area off of Rochester, those six homes. It was obvious that you listened to them and readjusted your plan to include that. And it's, Mr. Thomas and I have talked about the missing middle for many, many years, and this isn't quite that, but I think this is a good example, really good example, of mixed housing types. And I'm almost as close to missing middle as you can get with the open spaces that we have in our community, so I'm just really excited about it.
I'll offer a few comments. I certainly appreciate the effort, the outreach to the community, the neighboring residents. That was, I think, a really successful process, and it did change the project in a modest way, but I think in an important way. The connectivity to surrounding neighborhoods with the trail, I think, is a really valuable element, particularly with Rochester being, you know, the alternative. It's kind of nice to have an off-street opportunity to kind of connect through that part of Iowa City without, I'm thinking particularly by bicycle, having to navigate Rochester. And it's also close to Old Town Village. I think it's a major development next to a neighborhood commercial area. So I think the way in which the site has been developed with the higher densities near the corner, easy walking distance to Old Town Village are all valuable. In terms of the senior living, I mean, that's where, you know, and I think, I certainly applaud the idea of community with the different arrangement of housing types and the common area. I think that common area is a really important, you know, if we're talking about community and sociability among the neighbors, you need that common space in order for that sociability to be activated. I would make one comment on that. When I was looking at the site plan, I noticed that there are some single-family residences which back onto that open space, on the south side of the open space. And I was trying to look for a reference for, you know, is there anything in our code which speaks to that condition? And I recall that the South District Code does have, in addition to all the housing types, which I think has really been our focus, I think. Certainly, I'd say that most of the community conversation is about the different types of buildings. But that code included standards for civic spaces, and it described kind of in a way similar to how we have different housing types, different open space types, one of which was the green, which I think was the closest of the types to the condition we're dealing with. And under that category, you had a description of what the green is, its general character, and the standards. And under standards, you have size, the size of the feature, how the boundaries or edges are addressed, and then you also have a third standard related to adjacent building orientation. And it talks about the facades attached to or across a street shall front on the green. So it's that notion that, you know, when you have a common open space within a community or a neighborhood, the best relationship of the buildings surrounding that space are to front the common space. A good example of that would be in the Peninsula neighborhood, where you have Emma Harvett. There, all the residences surrounding that space have their, the frontage, the front of the buildings facing the common space. So, you know, that would be, the point I'm trying to make is, I think, you know, we've spent considerable time talking about the importance of different housing types. I think it's also important to be thinking about the different types of open spaces. You know, as I said, I really strongly support the idea of creating that common area. I think that's critical to building community. Community doesn't happen in thin air. You really do have to create the setting for that to happen. And with these open space types, there are different conditions and standards, which I think it's important for us to think about as we develop them.
I really like the idea of the senior living component. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I'm not going to second-guess or micromanage it. My only wish going forward, not necessarily for this project, but for any others that mirrored, is that some of what you're getting, what you're bringing us with this senior living component be included in single-family, so that there are more duplexes or townhouses and sort of more of a mix in that part, so that you can get different price points and so forth. That's, I recognize that's not happening here, but I would love to see that going forward, that's sort of like what we're trying to do with the Form-based Code in the South District and other areas.
Yeah, I certainly can support this project. I'm pleased that there are so many people in agreement with it. I'm sure there's, you know, there's been this process of some negotiation and talks with staff, I'm sure, as well as community members, and, but it's kind of nice to have a project that there is support throughout the community for. Certainly, the multi, you know, we have some diverse opportunities that's going to be coming to the, into this project. The one thing that I will say, so I'm all for the project, I love senior living. I've been out to the one in Corleville, and so great, great space, great services from those that I've talked to. This will be just a, I love the diversity and the opportunities that people of the older population will have, you know, through this project. What I will say, anytime I have the, you know, opportunity to talk to developers, when, you know, when they talk about, you know, supply, demand, and making this affordable, so neighborhoods certainly have, can dictate what the price points are. So I can build a house in one neighborhood and build the same exact house in another neighborhood, and we're not even talking about the price of the land, but just because of the housing around it, it can create, it really drives the market of what people sell it for. So what I will say is this, the market can dictate whatever, but there's also an opportunity for developers to, you know, take some of these very nice neighborhoods, and, you know, yes, the land is going to up the price from another neighborhood, but we all have to work together. There is an opportunity for all of us to work together to really create more supply and bring down those price points. This is certainly not going to, everyone in our community won't be able to afford this, is not an affordable project. That's something that I know that this council has been talking about, certainly in our, the Form-Based Code with the South District. That's something that we've given great consideration for. But in this instance, I do believe that this is great for our community, and I look forward to seeing all the development, and I will be supporting it tonight. If no other comments, roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item 10B, zoning code amendment, various historic preservation code changes. Ordinance amended Title 14 zoning of the Iowa City Code to clarify code language related to historic preservation. Staff has requested expedited action. Could I get a motion to waive, oh, sorry.
So I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Move by Weiner, second by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Taylor.
Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item number 11, South District sale of 2023 Taylor Drive. Resolution authorizing conveyance of a single-family home located at 2023 Taylor Drive. I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to start with Stan. Welcome.
Hey, how's it going?
Awesome and amazing.
And I can't read, so.
So moving forward, the, the operating cost of the property will be affordable as well. Additionally, we had two additional partnerships that provided some labor and some other opportunities. I saw some of you down there for the student-built project that worked on this. So not only did we get some labor from that, but it was a good opportunity for students to gain some experience with some finished carpentry, for some siding. School district assisted with that, and the members of the Greater Iowa City Home Builders' Association provided some oversight, and we got some storage sheds out of it, so, very good. And then last, the Residential Construction Confidence Course for Women that was put on by Kirkwood with the Greater Iowa City Home Builders' Association also provided an opportunity for local women to gain some experience with flooring and finished carpentry, among other things. So those are the pictures. I made snow go away, so that's always important to me. There's your before and after. So yeah, a great, a great project for us. Staff enjoys working on these. It gave a local resident of the, of the South District an opportunity to become a homeowner at an affordable rate and a first-time homebuyer. And we're looking at, even with the higher interest rates of a monthly payment, including property tax and insurance of about $850 a month, so.
Wow.
Any questions?
No, thank you so much. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm just going to see if council is inclined to support this.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All right, council discussion.
This is great. Yeah, what can we say? It's amazing. Congrats.
And thanks to city staff.
Yes.
For taking, I think, you know, what started as a conversation a long time ago and kind of making it happen, so really appreciate that. All right, I think we're ready for a vote. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is 2022 ADA curb ramp. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2022 ADA curb ramp project. Establishing amount of bid, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Hi, my name's Ethan Yoder. I'm with the City of Iowa City Engineering Department. So to talk about the ADA curb ramp project, we selected these locations based upon complaints we have received. And then when we take a look at these locations, we also try to look at the surrounding area to see if they also need to have new curb ramps placed. And with this year, we selected Lakeside Drive and Anderson Lane, Lakeside Drive and both Amber Lane intersections, East Washington Street and Amherst Street, Hickory Trail and Evergreen Court, McCleary Lane between Foster Road and Ball Street, which is an alley, Will and Brock Circle and McCleary Lane, Will and Brock Circle and Martin Street, Will and Brock Circle and Foster Road, and the last one is Walker Circle and Martin Street. And for this project, timeline, bid letting is August 23rd. The plan is to award the project on September 6th, with construction to start September 19th, and completion for the project to be the spring of 2023. The estimated cost is $140,000. Are there any questions?
My only question is, do you have any sense of what, what the scale is of these sorts of projects that remain to be done in the city? I mean, this is, we're at the anniversary of the ADA, we should be doing this anyway.
We, we do have a, kind of an online database showing the condition of all curb ramps, and then we do an annual curb ramp report that we could, we could recall and look at that. But we do, we do prioritize areas where there are not curb ramps right now. We're down to just a few of those locations. I mean, it's, we really made good progress, but even ones that we built, say, in the 90s that were compliant at that time could have, are now out of compliance. So I don't think we're ever done improving curb ramps, but we're certainly getting closer to the point where we've retrofitted a lot of the older neighborhoods.
That's great. It also helps people, like with strollers and other things and that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to ask the council if they're inclined to support this. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Harmsen.
Council discussion.
I just want to say it's very appropriate that this came up for us today, after the proclamation, and, you know, every day should be an ADA day, so it's just really good that we are trying to keep up with it and make sure that the whole city is inviting and accessible for all. So I appreciate it. It's the type of thing that's, oh, yeah, curbs, what? But it's, these are important things and make folks' lives better, and I'm really appreciative that this is something that the city has as part of its regular cadence, so thank you.
I think it's very appropriate that it came up today as well. And of course, Harry Olmstead.
Yes.
Comes to mind because certainly when I was running to be on council and after being on council, ADA compliance throughout this community was his jam. And so, curb ramps, he, I mean, he really opened my eyes to always think about the challenges, even though I'm in the field of disabilities, you know, just opportunities speaking with him, but also to the staff that is really in tune to ensuring that we are ADA compliant throughout our community, so thanks for what you all do.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning, mentioning Harry. I was thinking of that earlier this, this meeting, too.
All right, we're ready for roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 13, Fairchild Street Reconstruction. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Fairchild Street Reconstruction Project. Establishing amount of bids, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Aline Dumaki, and I'm a senior engineer in the Public Works Department. And today I'll be offering you two brief presentations, and I will start with Fairchild Street Reconstruction. This project is located along Fairchild Street between Clinton Street and Lynn Street. The project of this, the project scope includes the reconstruction of existing brick street along Fairchild Street with new concrete curbing gutter. And this work includes removal, salvaging, and resetting of existing brick on a new seven-inch Portland cement pavement with a drainable base. This project also includes replacement of sidewalk on both sides of Fairchild Street, and also replacement of curb ramps at intersections to provide ADA accessibility for pedestrians. This project will provide increased safety for vehicles and pedestrians while maintaining street aesthetics in this historic district. Additional improvements include storm sewer replacement with upgraded pipes and intakes at Dubuque Street and Lynn Street intersections, subdrain tile installation to provide adequate subway, subbase drainage in the new upgraded eight-inch water main to replace the existing six-inch water main built in late 19th century. These are some of the picture of existing conditions. As you can see, the pavement is uneven, and present, there are the existing limestone curbs built around 1892. Also, the existing pavement has poor drainage, and there are, there is one driveway that is protruding over the driving area currently. This construction project has been split in four phases to minimize impact to residents and allow access to their properties. All property owners affected by construction will be allowed to park within 400 feet of construction, and pedestrian access to properties will be maintained at all times. Phase one and three relate to construction sequence of the water main, which include installation of the water main pipes and valves, testing of water main, and temporary shutdown for connection to the existing water main. Phase two and four relate to construction sequence of the street, sidewalk, and storm sewer, and includes removal, grading, brick paving, sidewalk, driveways, and storm sewer. During phase two, the 200 block of Fairchild is split to allow parking lot access to residences at 216 and 222 Fairchild through one of the two driveways. During phase four, in the 100 block of Fairchild, is split to allow parking lot access to 427 North Dubuque, 128 Fairchild, and 430 North Clinton Street. This is the construction schedule. For the 200 block, the early start would be September 2022, and the late start of May, May 29, 2023. All work in phases one and two started this year shall be completed prior to November 1st of this year. No work shall begin in the 100 block of Fairchild, Clinton to Dubuque. And for the phases three and four, which represent the 100 block of Fairchild, the early start or late start would be May 29 of 2023. And all work on all phases shall be completed prior to July 28 of 2023. The estimated cost of construction is approximately $1,610,000. And with this, I will end this presentation, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Hi, thank you very much for the presentation. It gave me a really good overview. One of the questions I have, and maybe it's a naive question, is whether there are any risks with your timeline of completion, the early work, the first phases, by November of '22? Because I know that we've had, in other contexts, issues with supply and getting the materials. So is that something that is a, is a risk factor, or you feel pretty confident about?
Overall, we are somewhat confident. The only, the only thing that could be unforeseen would be some material lead times. However, we should, we are expecting for the phase one to go, go on with no issues. And that's why we offered a contractor the option to complete everything next year, if they have issues with supplies for this year.
I just would like to add that along those lines, like Aline was saying, we're allowing them to, if they start this year, they need to get finished, so that we don't have a street under construction during, during the winter months. So, and that makes it complicated for pedestrians, not only pedestrians, but vehicles, and then it's for snow removal. So if they get started, we want to see them get finished, but they can also push it back completely till next year, so fighting a little bit of flexibility there for them.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Before I close, just wanted to see if councilors are in support, inclined to support this. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Alter, she was the loudest. Council, council discussion.
I do appreciate all the, you know, thought that goes into the phasing of the project to try to minimize day-to-day disruptions. A project like this can be very disruptive, so appreciate all the ways in which that disruption is attempted to be minimized.
I appreciate the department saving the brick streets. I think that's an important part of the Iowa City history, and when we can do that, I know it's a lot of effort and work on this part of the city, but I appreciate that.
Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 14 is Scott Boulevard Sidewalk Infill. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Scott Boulevard Sidewalk Infill Project. Establishing amount of bids, security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome again.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. My name is Aline Dumaki, with, from Public Works Department. This is the second, my last presentation for tonight, and I will be discussing Scott Boulevard Sidewalk Infill and Storm Sewer Improvement Project. This project is located along Scott Boulevard, just north of American Legion Road between Silver Lane and Court Hill Trail, and it represents an important pedestrian and bicyclist route on the east side of town. Current existing conditions, such as deteriorated HMA shoulder with poor drainage, narrow and discontinued sidewalk warrant the need for this improvement project. With recent improvements at American Legion Road roundabout, this project will extend existing multi-use sidewalk towards Scott Park entrance. Additional improvements, the parking lot asphalt surface at Rita's Ranch Dock Park is also in need of significant restoration, and this parking lot will also be reconstructed. Proposed improvements include new eight-feet-wide PCC sidewalk along the east side of Scott Boulevard between Silver Lane and Court Hill Trail with new reconstructed hot-mix asphalt Other proposed improvements include, this is the, the second part of the sidewalk along Scott Boulevard. Other proposed improvements are new HMA surface parking lot with 14 regular stalls and one van-accessible parking space at Rita's Ranch Parking Lot. An additional portion of sidewalk would connect Rita's Ranch Dock Park to the existing sidewalk path at Eastbrook, Eastbrook Street Development. Additional improvements include replacing existing storm sewer system with upgrading, upgraded storm sewer pipes and intakes to match recent improvements at the intersection of Scott Boulevard and American Legion Road. the parking lot asphalt surface at Rita's Ranch Dock Park is also in need of significant restoration. And this parking lot will also be reconstructed. Proposed improvements include new eight-feet-wide PCC sidewalk along the east side of Scott Boulevard between Silver Lane and Court Hill Trail with new reconstructed hot-mix asphalt shoulder. Other proposed improvements include, this is the, the second part of the sidewalk along Scott Boulevard. Other proposed improvements are new HMA surface parking lot with 14 regular stalls and one van-accessible parking space at Rita's Ranch Parking Lot. An additional portion of sidewalk would connect Rita's Ranch Dock Park to the existing sidewalk path at Eastbrook, Eastbrook Street Development. Additional improvements include replacing existing storm sewer system with upgrading, upgraded storm sewer pipes and intakes to match recent improvements at the intersection of Scott Boulevard and American Legion Road. Some estimated quantities, there will be an installation of approximately 1,400 linear feet of sidewalk, approximately 1082 square yards of new HMA surface for shoulder in the parking lot, and the installation of approximately 905 linear feet of storm sewer and associated structures. The estimated construction cost of the project would be $355,000. And the construction schedule has a specified early start date of September 20th, 2022, a late start date of April 3rd, 2023, with a completion date of June 30th of next year. And with this, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, is council inclined to, to vote in support of this before I close the public hearing?
Great additions.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Thomas.
Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15 is CPRB Ordinance. Ordinance submit entitled A, Entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Eight, Entitled Community Police Review Board, to clarify certain procedural provisions and to codify certain existing procedural practices. This is first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Council discussion. Well, we should probably ask if anyone from the public like to go first. Open up public discussion. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I think the amendments are pretty straightforward, and we had the memos in the packet and in our info packet, so. I think we should approve them.
Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 16 is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 16A is Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2023. And all right.
So there's a gender balance requirement?
Mm-hmm. That's, it's kind of a no-brainer with the, with the gender requirement.
And there's one, what, there's one female applicant who seems perfectly well-qualified?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I worked with Paula on planning and zoning. She's very, very savvy and experienced on this, on this type of material. The other issue here, too, is, is the, the board is, I think they had to cancel a recent meeting because of a lack of a quorum. One, one of their members is in Europe, and sometimes is not available for Zoom. And so I think filling this if we can, if we feel we have a qualified candidate.
I also appreciate Larry Baker stepping up with the notion of not being able to fill, fill a gap until someone, and we're fortunate that we got another good candidate as well.
So it sound like I hear majority support for Paula Swiger.
I would agree.
Yeah, all right. So could I get a motion to approve Paula Swiger to the Board of Adjustment?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 17 is Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term effective upon appointment, June 30th, 2025. All right. Applicant, applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. There was a correspondence. Can I get a motion to accept, please?
So moved, Alter.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Number eight, item number 18 is Announcement of Vacancies Previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number 19, City Council Information.
I mentioned during our break that I need to figure out what to do for Saturday dinners now that the diversity market is done, but just want to give a shout out to, I think there were nine, had planned on 10 and canceled one due to the, the heat one day, but just a phenomenal program and project, and great, great things happening in that area, and just grateful to see that continue.
If I may, just to follow up on that, there's been a neighborhood discussion, and it looks like the Summer of the Arts is, has rescheduled one of their movies, and they want to show it at Pepperwood Plaza. And so they've reached out to Tasha Laird, and it looks like that will be happening as well. I will provide more details on the specific date when I find out, but this is hot off the presses.
I, I would just add, going back to one of our longstanding agenda items, there is a lot of COVID going around, so please, please take care, please, please get vaccinated that we can mitigate it.
All right, any other items there? Hearing none. Item number 20 is Report on Items from City Staff. We're going to start with our City Manager's Office.
Just quick mention that a lot of the police, fire, park staff are out at National Night Out. We have four National Night Out sites this year, which is great, pretty much every corner of town, so it's a little warm out there, but hopefully they're seeing good crowds.
Could you remind us where those locations are?
We have one at Christ the King Church on the west side, that's Mormon Trek Boulevard, one at Weatherby Park, one at Sugarloaf Circle, which is the Peninsula neighborhood, and one on Kilburne Court, which is east-side Windsor Ridge area.
Thank you, and we're going to move on to our City Attorney's Office.
And nothing for me tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, and our City Clerk's Office. All right. Head of number 21. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Burgess, taken by Taylor. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good night.